Good afternoon. Today's Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. Welcome to the public hearing. Notice of Assembly CID Board of Trustees by video conference and a phone conference, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:42 PM. Roll call. Ms. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Silva? Mr. Corona? Mr. Corona?
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. It was on mute. Present.
Ms. Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Moreno?
Present.
Dr. Carmen?
Present.
And Mr. Flores? Thank you. So if we don't have public comment, let's move on to Gen Item 1.4, Discussion, Presentation, Assembly of the CID Target Improvement Plans. Dr. Carmen?
Sir, I think we have Ms. Alvarado, Mrs. Cornet, and Mrs. Gomez joining us. Is that the whole crew right there, Ms. Alvarado?
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Good afternoon to everybody and Dr. Carmen, board members. Our public hearing is, today, we're going to have a public hearing on our campuses that are under a Target Improvement Plan. We have one elementary, Roberts Elementary, as we discussed at our committee meeting, and we have Miller Jordan Middle School and Gateway Academy. I'm going to, the planet is a, is, the template is a, is set by TEA. It's very, very thorough. Very, very small, as Ms. Yanis mentioned at the last meeting. It's itty-bitty. But I'm going to cover the, the, the action items or the prioritized focus items that we're focusing in on at all three campuses. And again, if there's questions, we're here to, to answer them. I'll start with Frank Roberts Elementary. And we have our focus areas. We have three prioritized focus areas with the essential action items underneath each one. We'll start with develop campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities. Under that, we have instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities to ensure that the campus runs efficiently and effectively. Under that, we also have build teacher capacity for leadership roles to support campus initiatives and ensure student success. Another one of our essential action items is objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. Under there are action items. We have creating objective-driven lesson plans with formative assessments that provides teachers with the tools needed to implement valuable instruction to students. Also underneath there, we have lesson plans with clear objectives and a focus on differentiation to clearly define curricular goals. And then our other essential action item is data-driven instruction. Underneath there are action items. Data analysis will be utilized to create prescriptive instruction to ensure student success. Regular campus leader data disaggregation to monitor and track the progress of all students and student groups, and utilize data to provide evidence-based feedback to teachers. Once again, principals worked with their committees, with their school committees, teachers, their administrative teams, along with Ms. Cornet and Ms. Gomez, to come up with, to, to work on these plans, to develop these plans. And these are the areas at Frank Roberts that they're focusing in on. I'll move over to Miller Jordan Middle School.
Ms. Alvarado, before you move on, can you explain to the public, please, why campuses are placed on improvement plans?
Sure. So the, on the accountability rating we had not last year, but the year before, we have, there were given a letter grade, and campuses that received a D or an F had to have, had to be placed on a Target Improvement Plan. Frank Roberts was an F campus.
Okay. And what are some of the reasons that the school got an F?
So, so the, the state ranks or looks at the scores, the star scores, as a way, that's the only, that's the tool that they use or the test that they use to rank, to give a letter grade. So they look strictly at the scores.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. I'll move on to Miller Jordan Middle School. Our action items we have under Domain One, we have approaching, we want to set our approaching to meet the 70%. Our meets to meet the 36%, and our masters to be at the 16%. This will support our campus in achieving an overall rating of a C for 2021. Domain two B, we want to reach with our economically disadvantaged a score of an 80, and that's our special pops of our economically disadvantaged students. We want to reach a score of an 80%. And then we look at Domain Three, and that's closing the gaps. We're looking at a scale score of a 70, and these are with our English language learners. That's a group of students that we want to work with them to reach a percentage of 70%. That's for Miller Jordan Middle School. And then we look at our Gateway Academy, our goals. We have Domain One, we have student achievement in areas of English, Biology, Algebra I, and US History. We look at English I and English II at passing rates of a 20 and a 25 respectively. I do want to reiterate that these, we don't have a, a large number of students at Gateway. And so we look at attainable goals. So English I and English II statewide are, are low. So we're looking at attainable goals of 20% and 25%. In math or algebra I, we're looking at setting that at a 55%. Our biology at a 65%, and our US history at a 60%. Also, one of our goals is for 80% of our juniors and seniors who are enrolled will graduate. And like I mentioned at our committee meeting, you know, Mr. Sanchez and his, and his administrative team are doing a really great job because some students who, who enter Gateway, a lot of them come with zero to two, three credits, and we're getting them to graduate. And so we're real, real happy and pleased that we get, you know, we want our students to, to obtain a high school diploma. And so we're working with them to achieve that. And so we, we want our, at least 80% of our juniors and our seniors to graduate. Okay? We also want all graduating students that will be CCMR, that's College and Career Military Ready, compliant according to the TEA standards. So with this being said, our accountability rating should increase. Under Domain Three, Closing the Gaps. Under this domain, there's four of the components. We have our academic achievement, our graduation, our English language proficiency, and our school quality student success. So we want to, you know, work on closing the gaps. We also look at all 14 student groups listed in TEA. We'll include in these accountability goals English I, English II exam passing rate of 20 and 25 respectively, math passing rate at 55%, biology at 65%, and US history at 60%. One of the things that we're going to be really focusing in, in that, in this at Gateway is our Tel Pass scores. And these are our students who are English language learners, right, who are still, have not been, who need to score high on that Tel Pass and get them exited from, from the program. So we want to increase at least one level of proficiency from 2019. Also, we want all graduates to be CCMR compliant in either the TSI, that students taking their TSI or industry certificate, or having an industry certification. So these are the goals for Gateway Academy that is listed in your Target Improvement Plan.
Ms. Alvarado, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
You're, you're overseeing these, along with Ms. Cornet and Ms. Gomez, in reference to these plans. There are checkpoints at each, at each, at certain times for each plan. And, and looking a lot closer, since the last time that we met in our committee meetings, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a 30-day checkpoint, a 60-day checkpoint, and a 90-day checkpoint. Can you share with us, because at this point in time, we should already be, if not there, we should already be at the 60-day checkpoint. So can you share with us some information for each of the campuses? What, what, what are 30-day outlook look like? How close we were to attaining the goals? And if we're not close, why not? And then the same thing with the 60-day. I want to, I want, if you can, to discuss the progress that we're making to attain those goals.
Mrs. Cornet, would you like to start with elementary?
Good morning. I mean, good afternoon. I'm sorry. Good afternoon. So as we spoke last time, the first cycle there, we did not need to fill out the first cycle information. However, on the Frank Roberts Plan, you will see that first cycle scores. Again, those were our first CFA assessments that were administered to our students, our students remotely. So these were all done remotely. These were all done online, something quite honestly, our children were not used to doing. And so you see the discrepancy there between those scores and what normally, even though they were struggling before, you see the discrepancy there. However, we just completed our second CFAs. And what we're looking at now is we're looking at that growth. Those data meetings will be held next week, and we will have that information. But we are seeing that growth. So you're going to see an improvement there, even though, again, as we said before, the instruction is very different than what we're used to. So, but we are seeing growth from our first CFA assessment and our second CFA, and we're going to continue to monitor that. I'd like to also say that this is not the only data we're looking at. We have other platforms that we use. We have other assessments that are administered. And so we look at all of that data when we're monitoring student progress and the campus overall progress.
When we, when you say "we," Ms. Cornet, are you, how, what part are instructional facilitators or instructional coaches playing in working alongside the principal? The principal and, and his team are not going to be able to get those goals on their own. So as far as central office staff and, and central office support, what kind of support are they getting? And is that being documented to get to that, the goals that we need to get to?
Absolutely, sir. We do provide, there's different levels of support. So when we're working with the plan specifically in setting goals, we are meeting with Mr. Diaz's campus team and myself, and we're having conversations as to how we're going to go ahead. What are their goals, his personal goals for his campus? And then what are relative measurable goals that we can go ahead that are realistic, like you had mentioned last time? Specifically, I'm going to give you an example for 46 for meets. That number varied. We, we toyed with the number and we moved it around, but we, we need that number to be 46, unless the state changes closing the gaps goals, because that's the minimum requirement for us to meet those closing the gaps goals. And so that's why, that's how we determine that. So that's how, that's one portion. Now, when they go ahead and we have the assessment, the assessments are administered, the instructional coaches go ahead and have meetings with, by grade level with teachers. And at that time, they're reviewing campus data, but not only campus data, but best practices and strategies. So we have all of our campuses together, all the teachers come together, and so the teachers that are doing well, they, they share those strategies that they're using to provide support to those teachers who are newer to the profession and are starting, are, are just learning. And quite honestly, you know, Mr. Diaz's campus has a relatively new team, and so they need that support. And then again, they also receive individualized support, depending on the needs that they're seeing at individual grade levels and with individual teachers.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, I will also let you know that I met with all principals on their 30, 60, 90-day plan. I happened to meet with Mr. Diaz today on his 90-day plan, which also goes hand in hand with all the goals that we have in our, in the tip.
Yes, Ms. Cornet, I want to, I want to go into, and also have a comment. You know, it's very difficult at this moment in time, you know, especially at the elementary level, to be dealing with this asynchronous learnings, you know. So I know that the staff at the local level, I know Mr. Diaz, his staff, they're doing a tremendous job trying to nurture, you know, the kids and the parents and all that, just to, to, to increase the kids to, to log on remotely. We know that's extremely challenging in itself. But we just want to continue to just to support our staff, you know, and make sure that, that we continue to provide the resources they need. You know, more so now that they're, you know, now that they're, they're coming back to campus. Yes, we know that they're struggling, but I know, I know for a fact that Miller Jordan, Roberts, and the Gateway are doing a tremendous job because, you know, they've kept us up to date, or parents call me, and so on and so forth. So they're extremely happy with the leadership at that level and the support they get from administration. So I just want to thank you guys so much for that, because I know this is very difficult times. And, you know, and it's, it's extremely challenging, especially, I know firsthand, because I'm a parent. So I have an 11-year-old that attends the school district, so I know firsthand how challenging it is. And I know firsthand how great our staff is doing from, from, you know, at all levels. So I just want to thank you guys so much for that support.
Mrs. Gomez, would you like to talk about your secondary campuses?
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's good to be speaking to you all without having to wear a mask. So I want to reiterate that the scores that we're focused on are from 2018, 2019, because last year we did not test. And so in meeting with the principals, one of the things that they reiterated to me was, "Ms. Gomez, you know, I can't believe we're still working on this because we were doing so well on our benchmarks." When Star came along and it was waived, one of the things that they expressed was that there was, it was a double-edged sword. They were relieved that they didn't have to take Star at the beginning, and then after, they were like, "We're not going to have scores to show how hard we've been working." So let me give examples of what, your question was specific to these benchmark-type outcomes at the 30-day periods. So Cycle Two, it extends through February. It's December through February. And for Miller Jordan, the essential action or the, the focus area for them, 1.1, is to have teachers meet during PLC time. The, the goal that they were trying to address is develop campus instructional leaders with clear roles and responsibilities. And so they recognized that there were some lack of structure. This is what Mr. Lopez is referencing, those nuances of being able to PLC in person as opposed to PLC virtually. I'm sure that I don't have to explain the, the extra challenges that are presented. However, they recognize that perhaps the teachers had not been displaying the data as they had wished for them to do during the PLCs. And, but in, one of the things that, that the principal noted was the campus goals are displayed in each hallway, which are visible to students, and the process will continue after each CFA. So by the way, these essential actions, they're the same for any school that is under Targeted Improvement.
Targeted.
Same choice of five, but after doing a reflection, they'll select three. So the other area for Miller Jordan is objective-driven daily lesson plans with formative assessments. I'm happy to say, not only in their review are the lesson plans addressing student engagement, but there is more clarity and purpose, and this is done by evaluating the, the lesson plan writing and making sure that it's structured properly. Here, your question specifically was, forgive me for my cheaters, I have to take them on and off. The instructional coaches have done an amazing job, and I know that sometimes that praise falls on deaf ears because it seems like it's something that I have to say, but I'm saying this, speaking very sincerely, when I say that they cannot provide more support than they do. The, not only did the instructional coaches prepare a lesson plan that follows the 5E instructional model, but they revamped it so that it's more user-friendly, the template. You know, you can't reinvent instruction, right? But the way that the, that the teachers put the information together and provided this for them. Additionally, they have Google Classrooms for every single tested area with a multitude of resources, things like Jamboard, so they can make the engagement process. One of these days, I'd love to walk you through some of the, the resources that they've made, excuse me, available to the teachers. And they are also conducting these meetings on a regular basis, and we have a schedule, and they keep track of them. They create agendas. They practice what they preach and provide this, use the same platforms that the teachers are using. They model for them. They do very in-depth data digs for them and provide all that information to them to, to, I guess, help them to, to save time. And then ultimately, the last one, the data-driven instruction, not only do they meet with them and break down this information, they look at hotspots. We were recently looking at their evaluations. They know areas that they want to work on, but quite frankly, they are doing an amazing job. They're extremely talented, and they were successful teachers before they became instructional coaches. So they have a lot of, of that experience to draw from. And so I can tell you that with, with great confidence, both of those principals feel like they are accomplishing their goals. At Miller Jordan, if you look at their TAPER report, you'll see that, I was just looking at it a second ago, they have a, 22% are continuously enrolled, you know, and I, and I only bring, bring this to the attention of the board so that they understand they have a revolving door, you know, and it's extremely difficult. But of course, Mr. Sanchez has years of experience, and so you'll see that his, his campus, it has a unique situation, right? He is, he is working with students that already have established some very strong challenges that they need to overcome. So with his, let me go a little bit quicker. I know I have a tendency to talk too much, as I was an English teacher in my previous life. Prioritized area, the first one is aligning to the TEES. And so how do you measure that? Well, their 90-day desired outcome is monitoring and analyzing students' online coursework, giving those campus quizzes to make sure that the curriculum is aligned to the instruction, and the performance is aligned to the instruction. And so it's a, not just monitoring the performance, but monitoring the fact that they have a viable and guaranteed, guaranteed viable curriculum. The prioritized focus area two has to do with daily objective-driven lesson plans to include formative assessments representative of an understanding of all essential standards of the TEES. I think Dr. Carmen has spoken to this numerous times, that our transition in San Benito to the TEES resource system has been a huge component in aligning our instruction. And so we're definitely going to look at, I think, very, we're going to have a fruitful outcome when it comes to that objective because we're already starting from a very strong place in using that as our curriculum. And so what is his 90-day outcome? It's having teachers create lesson plans for a hybrid schedule to accommodate student learning needs. So you can see how these tips that they had been working on even last year, which had they tested, they would be out of this tip situation. They now had to tweak to accommodate a COVID environment. And so notice how in the outcome, they're expecting the teachers to now create a lesson plan for a hybrid schedule. In other words, the teacher has to be versatile enough to either do instruction remotely or do it synchronously. And that's how these plans go along. They are, you know, very specific, and we work very closely with both of the campuses and provide a great deal of support.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Gomez, Ms. Cornet, and, and Ms. Alvarado. Thank you for your due diligence in doing and, and working with these campuses. I know that these three campuses are our target campuses, but I, I trust that, I, I, under Ms. Alvarado's leadership, and, and you, Ms. Gomez and Ms. Cornet, we will also ensure that, that none of our other campuses fall into that predicament. Because I know in, in a couple of years ago, we had the high school with a big concern. We had Fred Booth with a concern with special ed. And so hopefully, you know, we don't get back, you know, we're, we're, we're targeting these three campuses because they are the tips campuses, but we need to not lose focus on the others as well, so that we, we work as a team, that y'all continue to work as a team and make sure that we don't fall into that spiral. Appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you, ladies, for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentation. Appreciate it. Anybody, anybody else? Any more comments?
I can move on to Gen Item? I do want to say, as a former teacher, I know that this can be very stressful for teachers, you know, having to meet goals and standardized testing and, you know. And so I, I commend the teachers for doing such a hard job. It's not something that just anybody does, you know. So we have a lot of great teachers. I was here in the district 10 years, so I know that we have a lot of great staff and a lot of great teachers that will make it happen and will bring up our ratings for our campuses. I did have a question on the, on the, you, you mentioned a lot of great things, you know, like the, the lesson plans, alignment to the TEES, evaluations on teachers, and so forth. I do have a question. On those students that are struggling, the, the kids that are bubble kids or the kids that were failing on their star exams, what type of individualized instruction are y'all having? I know that in the past, where you can have them come to tutoring, you know, after school or so forth, and now with hybrids, it might be more difficult. So if you can explain that to me, please. Ms. Gomez or?
And let me start off by saying that I really appreciate your comments, Ms. Lopez. I think everybody in the country appreciates teachers more now after COVID. And I, there are some teachers that I absolutely love. I, I love them and I cherish them because I know that their work ethic is just amazing. And so I hope that people know that these are, you know, people that we know and we care for, and we care for their safety as well. So even when we're looking at other issues, you know, these are, these are people that we have built relationships with and that we've watched grow. And so of course, that's always our top priority. So your question had to do with how we support students in need of remediation. And we do have obviously a challenge in that we don't have the face-to-face necessarily, but we can do that. So the flexibility of having an asynchronous gives us an opportunity to meet with students. Actually, it's a little bit easier. As long as we can get them, make contact with them, we can make those arrangements. So in, in some cases, it, it's a matter of working with some students asynchronously and so that there is that time allotted to work with the individual student or a smaller group of students. But also, we have a number of, we call them e-learning resources, and we, we're taking a look at that as well. So we have iStation, we have Education Galaxy, we have Dreambox, and these, they're, this, they're software programs that are set up like, like games. And so the students can progress through them as well. So, you know, every child is different. We were talking about one of the requirements in the tips is looking at the English language proficiency. You have students at beginner, intermediate, advanced, advanced, high. The goal is every year to advance one level. That's the objective for all the students. So depending on the students' needs, That's the objective for all the students. So depending on the students' needs, we have a variety, we have. You know, just a, a huge repertoire of things that we can revert back to. But one of the things is our asynchronous and hybrid schedules allow us that flexibility that if we have to, we can meet with students one-on-one. Or in smaller groups to give them that additional help. And then, as I mentioned before, an alternative to that is to use some of the e-learning software that we have. And then also the after school program has tutors and Gira pass tutors. And so there are a number of resources that we're using. So we're going to hit them with everything we have in our, in our arsenal to assist them. You know, we love these kids and we want them to be successful.
Wonderful. And what about our special education students?
I was going to go ahead and just piggyback on what Ms. Gomez shared, specifically for Frank Roberts Elementary. We've already started tutorials. They started their tutorials the first week of November and they are doing. Face to face and both virtual tutorials to meet the needs of those students that are struggling. Also, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a variety of assessments and diagnostic assessments that are administered. And teachers disaggregate that data and identify their students and identify specifically student needs. And then they do provide interventions throughout the day. So they do those as well. At the elementary campus, we also have our RTI teachers who provide support. For those additional students who need or are in greater need. So all of that support is available throughout the day, throughout the instructional day, and it's targeted specifically to individual student needs. Special education students also are provided support and it could be through the RTI teacher, it could be through the resource teacher. Or the classroom teacher with accommodations. Their accommodations are revisited. Based on how the students are progressing and how they're using them. And so those are reviewed and also their, their instructions very specific and targeted based on their needs. I don't know if I've answered all your questions, but.
Yes, you did. Yes, thank you very much. And that was my question, because I know that some of the special ed kids need that extra help, you know, the, like from the resource teacher. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, ladies.
Any more questions? Okay, let's move on to agenda item two point one. A German can have a motion, please.
So move.
I got a motion, I got a motion, Ms. Weaver can have a second, please.
Second.
I got a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. We adjourn this meeting at exactly six fifteen PM. Thank you.